Everybody's ready, we're just, as soon as Eric gets sit down, we're gonna get this started.
Everybody ready? Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and with calling a meeting order, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, we're gonna start off today, uh, work sessions, as I told you, at the council meeting, each month, after the election, then those, the, the payments, for each meeting, we agreed that would be compensated for those, those council members. So that'll occur after the election, so it's not today, uh, but we are gonna start, kind of, uh, the discussion was around, the staff provides a presentation in these lunch work sessions, or what we're doing, and, but providing the council at time to provide things that, that they wanna talk about, just in general, and to make sure there's an, an agenda for that, so we've done that today, but, but we're gonna start off today. There's, uh, this kinda goes back to the, uh, the lesson learned on, what was it, the golf cart ordinance. So there's an ordinance that's out there, that's wanted to be presented to the, to the council for several months now, about utility locator, utility providers in town, hitting our services, and so, before we create legislation, and do something different, I've asked the chief, and those that have asked for new legislation to be presented, it's something that's different, that's not necessarily statewide, to present what it's for, why it's out there, before it comes before you, you have a chance to kinda say what it is, and to make sure we understand it, before we get into unintended consequences, because creating legislation is not something we've done a lot of, so when we do that, I've asked them to put it on the agenda today, then I'm gonna talk about some priorities, just overall for the city, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the council members, for what they had in their, their discussions, so Chief Compton, you're gonna go first, regarding utility damage fee proposal.
So, in front of you, you have a packet there, with the PowerPoint slides, and then the first ordinance has a green bar at the top, and both, and the second one has a red bar, and, uh, both of these are in a draft form, and as we go through here, if you have any questions, uh, please ask, uh, happy to answer those, if I can't, I have some, uh, experts in the back of the room, that will bail me out, I hope, uh, and then, if you read over this, after the meeting's over, and you, uh, wanna bring it back to the next council meeting, I will be gone, uh, but Deputy Chief Hollinsworth will be here, if you wanna write on here, if you have something you want changed, or something like that. This is scheduled to go to the city council, and March is where we're headed, uh, timeframe, so we'll have both reads, the first and the second meeting in March. So the first part of this, we're, we're gonna talk about is utility damage ordinance, and then the second part of this, is a fire department standby fee, for an ordinance there. And it's two separate ordinances, that are dealing with, uh, underground utilities, when they're striking those, and what, the, the biggest corp, or the biggest problem is, of people that are in town, doing the directional boring, for fiber, or sometimes natural gas installations, but mostly fiber, uh, and you'll see those doing, those directional borings, installing that fiber optic line all over. Currently AT&amp;T's putting a lot of money, and putting fiber in, we need it, try, I have it at my house, it's great, but there's also other u, companies that can come into town, like Ozark Fiber, I think was one of them, yeah, they were talking about building out an infrastructure town, so we may have another company or two show up, as well, that would do these, so, uh, one ordinance is chapter 515.050, that's the builds, or public works side, that, uh, deals with the fines, and the other ones in the fire, side is 205.067. So we're gonna do the build side first, so the objective of this, is to deter unauthorized work from utility company, or utility providers, or construction companies, that fail to get the proper locates. If they get a locate, and they have the proper locates done, in advance, the likelihood of them striking a line is far less. When they don't do the locates, and they're just kind of a shot in the dark, well, I, I think, you know, I can get through here, that's when they're hitting the gas lines, the sewer lines, and the electrical cables underground, so we're trying to deter them. To give you an overview of who supplies utilities to the city republic, Liberty Utilities supplies most of the electrical service to the single-family dwellings in town, City Utilities of Springfield supplies a lot of the commercial areas, and the residential area, and the former village of Brookline, and then Ozark Electric has small pockets, that we have yet to annex, in too. To give you an example, this building is on one utility supplier, the property for Fire Station 3, directly south, is on Ozark Electric. It's yet to be annexed into the city, we've yet to develop it out, but once we do that, it'll go on city utility system. So those are the electrical suppliers, natural gas is Spire, they have the biggest part of the city, and then city utilities, as well, Springfield takes care of a lot of the natural gas, they actually have the former village of Brookline area, uh, the Fire Station 2, up through that corridor, up there, to give you a reference. Within the city, there's also several major pipelines, that crisscross the city, that supply natural gas, and petroleum, uh, products to the fuel depot out here. And there's a, a hodgepodge of large underground mains, that are just running across town. Probably the biggest one we have, runs across the south side of town, it is a, uh, main natural gas supply for the city of Springfield, and it's a 12-inch gas main. So, when we get into 515, uh, on this ordinance here, that deals with the fines for striking underground utilities, some of the definitions that are here, utility strike, we've got it worked out here, so that when we have somebody come in, we've hand this document to them, this ordinance, they'll know what we're talking about, so, there's no gray area, it's very cut, and, uh, clear, concise, what we're talking about. Talks about preventable damage, contractor, who is the contractor? It talks about the pre-construction requirements, that they have to go through, so before they start working town, they have to come and meet with the city, to help prevent anything from being damaged, and those meekly, uh, have more bi-weekly meetings, and if they're not doing any work, they're, we're not having meetings, just to have a meeting, we, uh, Tim is here, and, uh, they mostly, once they get their equipment in town, and get to rolling, then he's out there in contact with them all the time, and then there's a review, uh, the specifications for constructions that they're working on, and they had to have all the permits, that they need to come into town to work. So section three, and that ordinance talks about, uh, utility damage, and the preventable measures, uh, the contractors are required to follow the state, local, federal laws, and having those marked, uh, before they do any drilling, or digging, um, so that's gone over with them, as their requirements, when they have to, uh, before they start construction, and then the penalties, if they strike something, is laid out in this ordinance, as well. So the first offense is $500, and then the second, and the third's there. If they get to the point of a, uh, stop work order, and a $10,000 fine, uh, we obviously have a problem, because they're not, they don't care what they're doing. They're just here to punch that cable through, to get that conduit in the ground, to get the fiber pulled. Any fine like this would go through municipal court, so it's not that, something we would just run out and say, hey, you owe us 500 bucks, that don't happen. So there's a whole process, that will have to go through municipal court. To give you an example of what, uh, any of the money that's generated by the, the fines here, will get split, three ways, uh, water, sewer, and streets, because that's what Tim is doing, the locates for, our water and sewer infrastructure, and then to give you an example of what we're dealing with, I got a couple slides here, so this is a fence in a backyard, where a gentleman failed to have a, uh, locate called in, dug the fence post in, or the fence company dug the fence post in, that's a fiber optic cable that goes to somebody's house. You think, okay, well, that's no big deal, but, we have a bunch of people that live in this town, that, when the weather's bad tomorrow, my wife will be one of them, her bank says, here, take your computer home and work, so that stops their business, or they have a home-based business, so that's a loss to that particular person, living in that house. Uh, this is a former mayor, uh, they've drooled through his sewer lateral line, um, uh, Mr. Ushry wasn't very happy, called me on Saturday morning, I was like, man, I'm the fire guy, I can't help you with this, so, uh, but, the problem with this is, this is up on the homeowner, to have this fixed, because it's the sewer lateral line, not the sewer main, it is their responsibility, or the contractor steps up and fixes it, or sometimes the city will have to bail them out, depending how difficult of a repair it is, and where it's at. This is one that was at the rush, where a subcontractor, uh, was working over there, and they dug up the electric that was feeding the pump house. If this had happened when the rush was open, the rush would've had to close for the day, because they had no electricity to, for the water filtration system, and to make things work, uh, the pumps that run the lazy river, and all the other stuff, all that was out. And again, this was done because the utility, uh, or the subcontractor, working for the, uh, main contractor, did not call in a locate. And the last one that we have here, is the luckiest man alive, he drove a ground rod through a two-inch natural gas main, and how he got that, without sparking it, and catching it on fire, I'll never know. But again, the same thing, did not call in a locate, if you look at that picture close enough, you see a little wire, along the bottom, that's a tracer line, for that gas main. So if he'd called in a locate, they would've went out and hooked the wire up, and they could've told him, within probably an inch, or two inches, exactly where that line was. And so when they get to areas like this, instead of just taking a backhoe and digging, they're supposed to get out and hand shovel, or what Mr. Cameron's referred to in meetings, as potholing, you'll see that currently going up and down Lynch Street, uh, they're actually getting out, digging, finding where that's at, how deep it is, if, you know, it's in there perfectly straight. So that is the part that deals with, uh, striking underground utilities, and that ordinance there is, uh, in the green, that I gave out to you. The next part of this, that's kinda tied to it, actually goes into the, uh, fire departments, section 205.067, deals with emergency site monitoring, and, uh, this is an ordinance that we were proposing to pass, that will let us bill for services after the first hour, if we're required to stand by there, and we've actually had that happen, a couple of times, where we've gotten tied up four to five hours, on large gas leaks, and we're trying to recoup our costs. So, uh, kinda along the same thing, when, uh, hazardous work is being done, in areas where you have gas lines, gas leaks, electrical emergencies, high-risk environments, uh, you know, to the public, we may be required to stand by, and respond quickly, when, uh, something like that happens. Generally, will be initiated when a, uh, construction company hits a gas main, or some sort of underground utility, and they're gonna be requesting for us to stand by. There's a section in here, that says, as the fire chief, I can mandate a standby, and Megan drafted this, and I, I'm okay with this, but there's also, the bold is added in there, as the fire chief, I can mandate a standby, but I can't bill these people, without Mr. Cameron's approval. And there has to be a checks and balances to this, because, if you remember years ago, there was Max Creek, Missouri, you'd ride, and drive through there, two miles to the speed limit, and you get a speeding ticket, well, that's what I'm trying to prevent, I'm, as long as I'm here, probably not gonna have a problem, but I don't know who your next fire chief's gonna be, and I don't want it where somebody doesn't have to have accountability. So if we get to a, a point, where we're gonna have to have a mandated standby, because of damage to infrastructure done, or we need to stand by for like a fire watch, or something like that, we have the right to bill them, but before we invoice them, it has to have the city administrator's approval. We just don't wanna just be mailing out invoices, to our contractors, and, and property owners, so there's little checks and balances there. Moving on, uh, the city may assess the standby services, and then, and this is spelled out in there, uh, when the standby service fee will be charged from responsible parties, and parties include, the property owner, developer, or the contractor, damaged those utilities, and then it breaks down how we're going to invoice for those, so, in Missouri, there is a current state law in place, called the spiller pays laws, and that law is, you're, you're, it's mostly to use for transportation of chemicals, up and down the roadway. So if a gasoline truck turns over, state law allows me to invoice for our standby time, and cleanup of that gasoline truck. So the only way I know to base our fees for standby time, on something that is quantifiable, is to base it on the state's spiller pays laws. Now, you may ask, why can't we just use that spiller pay law, to, and apply it to our underground utilities, like we're talking about here? There's not a real, clear, defined area, in that law, that says underground utilities are included, but there is a fee structure there, that breaks down for the cost of a fire truck, the cost of staff, the cost of equipment, battalion chiefs, command staff, so forth, and so on. So our fees for this standby time, are based upon that, and that will be included, in, there's a whole chapter 800, of the city has, of fees, uh, that lays out for fees for even parks and rec, all of that will be placed into there, so if these two ordinances, or if this ordinance passed, you will see us come back again, with an amendment to chapter 800, to include those fees in that, so it's a little bit of a, gotta do one first, before we do the other. Currently, the fees, uh, they're low, we'll never get back all of our money, but it's a starting point, we should recoup probably seventy, seventy-five percent, but the cost of the fire engines, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, uh, the cost of the staff is twenty-five dollars an hour, battalion chief, uh, when we get to that point, we have those people employed, is a hundred dollars an hour, plus the twenty-five dollars an hour, for the staffing. If we use some of our specialty equipment, like a four gas meter, that monitors explosive level, like at a natural gas release, uh, there's a fee there, a twenty-five dollars an hour, for that. So, there's a little bit of a way to recoup our expenses, and then, if any revenue generated by these fees, goes back into the fire department's operating fund, to offset the cost that we just incurred. To give you an example, where this is gonna come into, uh, be applied, we actually had this happen, uh, this is out in the area where the Walmart prescription fill facility is, and that is a four-inch high-pressure gas main, that feeds Willard, Ash Grove, and Walnut Grove, and the utility, or the contractor, at the time, was cutting the road in. It was marked where the gas line was, this is one of those things, you do not want to hit, and he kept going over it, with the bulldozer, pushing the dirt, pushing the dirt, and after he pushed away about two and a half feet, he decided, that's getting a little tough, can't push, so he puts the ripper down, on the back of the dozer. If you look at that picture, that line is bowed, that's because he hit it with a D9 caterpillar, and wouldn't quit, he just kept giving it throttle. Why it didn't explode, it was his lucky day. So what happened next, was a four-plus hour event, uh, Spire Natural Energy sent a crew out there, because of the pressure of the gas main, they had to hand dig this up. And so they started off down there, uh, they were like, yeah, hang out, just a little bit, then the gas was so massive, the plume was so massive, they had to go on a breathing air system, to dig the rest of that out. The chances of it exploding, right there on that spot, slim to none, because it's too rich, there's too much there, but the chances of it exploding, once it gets away from there, and it gets dissipated, and it mixes with the oxygen, really good. This particular day, it was our lucky day, so, we didn't have any wind, if we'd had a north wind, it would've blew it right into the Amazon facility. So, to give you an idea of how our fees work out, for something like this, uh, we don't charge for the first hour, that we consider that part of the 911 call, the initial call. So, after hour number one, we start charging, it's broken fifteen-minute increments, so the fire engines, four hundred and fifty bucks, staff time's three hundred, seven hundred and fifty dollars, fee to the contractor. Now, those fees that's in that spiller pay, uh, law, they're rather dated, and I would look for the state to pause, uh, possibly update those, in the very near future. Gentlemen, that is all I have, do you have any questions?
Mr. Murphy?
So the, um, I think you mentioned subcontractors, so when they come and get the permit for that, is it through, like, for example, AT&amp;T has it, they subcontract it out, who's, who's the permit issue to, and how's that handled, when they subcontract that out?
Yeah, it's, generally speaking, it's whoever's low bid, for them, for the project, projects, a little bit out, see, we want so many, um, connections for fiber installed, like, when they come through my subdivision, every house had at least, uh, a fiber connection, sometimes they put one in, and split it off to two houses. So they know, and I actually talked to an AT&amp;T, uh, engineer, and I said, so how you, are you coming out and measuring this, and he goes, oh no, we just look at Google Earth. And he goes, we just give them a plan, based upon Google Earth, well, here's the street, here's the fire hydrants, we need to be over here, cause they have this utility, that they can be in. Whoever does the, who gets the award for the contracting, to be really frank with you, we have some work going on, right now, with a contractor, that's a local contractor, here in town, and they do really good work, and they're very caring, but we've had contractors, that are from out of state, they, they don't care, they're just here to crank that job out, and go back to Texas.
So then, if there's multiple issues on there, does it go back to the subcontractor, or to AT&amp;T, in that example?
On this, the way this is worded, it goes back to the contractor, doing the work.
And then I guess on those individual contractors, we're looking at, is there bonding requirements, insurance requirements?
They should have all of that, and you're requiring that, aren't you, Tim, when they come in?
They do.
A right away inspector.
To be clear, this particular ordinance, I never intended to direct to that, like AT&amp;T, I passed an ordinance, I had an ordinance passed last year, that, so, these are mostly big, big construction projects, um, and like fence builders, I said, they, I pretty well got damages shut down, from drillers. I could give them time off, and it doesn't affect anybody, but if I give a fence contractor time off, that affects the citizens, paying for that fence. So, this was a better way to handle that, than that, as opposed to just shutting them down.
Thanks.
There's a, a lot of different work, and a lot of different, see, you have fence, um, some areas of towns, spiral were placed, the natural gas mains are doing, way with the steel mains, will pull in a, a directional bore, and a plastic line, and it's just a, a while, every day, there's something. Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Tim, can you explain that last part, uh, what'd you say about the fence?
I didn't use that as an example, the fence con, person.
Like a, like a privacy.
Can we get you to come up to the microphone, please? That way everyone at home can hear you, too.
Yeah, so it's, if a fence contractor's building a fence, privacy fence in the backyard, for instance, not long ago, I got an emergency call, fence guy cut a phone line, and I went there, it was perfectly marked, and he just put his fence, I said, well, did you put your fence post there, it's marked, he said, well, that's where it needed to go. I said, could you have spotted that phone cable? Could've, but might've, might've hit it with a shovel, yeah, but, you know, maybe you wouldn't have. I said, well, what if that'd been electric, he said, oh, I wouldn't have put it there then, so, it's things like that, that I deal with quite a bit. And, this was more directed at like those guys, or like the electric at the rush, no locates, that gas line, that got the stake put through it, actually went into a main feed electric, and welded that ground rod to that electric. Empire showed up, and was running the thumper, which sends a current down, to find where it was hit. Why it didn't blow up, I don't know, we were all standing over the top of it, when that was going on, um, it's just a matter of time, somebody's gonna get hurt, at some point. Can I kinda explain to you?
They did, yeah, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council?
So if Dave, if DIY Joe built his own fence, he'd be still with the same laws and regulations?
Yeah, I mean, it, real easy to call in a locate, and, you know.
The citizen is required, by law, to call in a locate, the same as the contractor.
Actually, I think that actually goes back to a state law, if I'm correct on that, whether.
Yes, you're right.
Mr. Mayor, the challenge is, is most, like, like, most residents, though, I, I go back to my mother, is not gonna know to call Missouri 1 call, so I mean, it's like, there, there's a level of education, it's not just, and I think that's why, for me, it's like, I talk about legislation, I don't wanna be punitive, in any way, for things that are like, okay, most general people would not know, but those of us that work in it every single day, says, call before you dig, there's commercials of it, but, you know, unless you get a flyer every month, that says, call before you dig, you don't even know what that means, and so, I think that's why, having the discretion side of the statute, which I'm glad you put the discretion where, or added the language, that I have the right, I guess, or the administrator has the right, to say, hey, that's just, I mean, we're not out to look to make a bunch of money on it, but I think there are bad actors, that are grossly, what, which is why I asked for the why behind the law, what, what is it that you're trying to stop, that we don't already have a law in place, that allows us to stop, and so.
There will be people that will make mistakes, and there will be stuff, that is not quite located correctly, actually had Spire hit one of their own gas mains, with them doing the work, and they had located it themselves, and located it completely wrong, I mean, accidents will happen, it's just those people, that are just consistently doing it.
So Chief, it, my understanding is, if, if, and, and I've run into this a lot, in the past, is, you know, you get those locates, you get a mark, you dig your hole, and you hit it dead center, even the mark's over here, so in those situations, where it is, a, a clear accident situation, the contractor, he's not necessarily looking at the liability of that situation, on hitting.
And, and that's where this goes back to, if the, for us, on the standby time, if they're, if the utility, you know, if it's Spire, or city utilities, saying, hey, this is such a hazard, that you need to hang out here, because this could blow up, or, you know, we could have gas seeping into houses, or something, then that's where our part of that kicks in, but you're exactly right, where they put that tracer wire underground, where it's supposed to be, and sometimes where it ends up, is not always correct, and, I mean, there's a give and take, there's some of them, that are just blatantly obvious, that they don't care.
And then, one more question for you, Chief, on those calls to locate, for example, like that sewer lateral, when they call to locate, I know they do the mains, do they also locate those laterals to the home, all the way to the home?
No, the city homeowners are pumped from the point of connection to the house.
And, and even as far as location, for, for a locate, underground locate?
We kinda give, we kinda give a location, of where we think it is, but we don't, we don't have the ability to know.
Still up to the contractor, from, from that estimation, to figure.
And, I'm not out to get anybody with this, you know, I'm, this is just to make the ones who are negligent, responsible, I would probably never charge a homeowner.
I would tell him, you know, you need to call in, locate, explain to him, more of an educational moment, as to opposing a fine.
And, and I'm sure most of those big utilities, aren't necessarily in the homeowner's yard, unless they're bordering that utility there, but.
Sure, so, that, that's kind of, you gotta kinda use discretion, and.
Sure.
And just after the ones that are negligent, that know better.
And creating a problem, and an issue, and creating that safety issue, that safety issue for the citizens.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, any additional, Mr. Neal?
And this isn't necessarily for these specific ordinances, but do we have rules around, if a contractor requests a dig, or a locate, and let's say there's snow on the ground, they come out, paint, the snow melts before they start work, can they just fall back and say, well, we called, we ordered the locate, you know, a week ago? Or, like, do we have something in place to deal with that, cause I recently saw that happening?
We do not, but it's, they're supposed to call in another locate, or something like that, as, as a matter of fact, I shut a crew down last week, or after the snow, I shut them down, and made them call in locates, before they could dig, which cost them a day, but, oh well.
That, could that be on the, on the contract, that they're signing, that they're, where if we have a snow event?
That, could that be on the, on the contract that they're signing that there where if we have a snow event, you're gonna do an locate?
Sure.
Should that be, is that in the paperwork that they look at or?
It is, it is not, but that's kind of, that's kind of a state law thing.
That's part of the, well, what's the number for dig, dig right?
Eight one one.
Eight one one. So that, that, from what my experience, that's all part of that, that eight one one and that responsibility to a contractor on, on locating and, and once those lines disappear on the contractor again to call for a relocation.
They're supposed to call a relocate.
Okay.
Do we have any additional questions from council? Mr. Gerke.
Chief, you said earlier, you know, someone called you, like, what's the citizen supposed to, what's the best path? Something happens on their property, whether it's a lateral line or wherever else, what's the best contact for them, I guess?
Depending on what they strike, uh, if it is a, a gas line, they're probably gonna call nine one one. If it's a water or sewer line, there's after hour emergency numbers that the city has that they can call, uh, that is answered. There's a, a water number and a sewer number that they can get a hold of. But I'm just gonna be really honest with you. The, the, the fire station's the only building in town that answers the phone pretty much twenty-four seven and it, somebody will find that number and call us and then we end up, the on-duty crew calling the correct number. Any other questions?
I, I have a comment. Mr. Campbell.
With your rates, uh, with the fire service, um, they seem really, really low.
They are.
Have you, have you ever hired a tow truck for three hours?
I have, and I got a break.
Yeah, they seem really, really low. I like the fact that the first hour is part of the nine one one. But after that, the rates seem really low to me. Not that I'm, not that I'm advocating for them to be increased. I'm just pointing out that with what I deal with, it's super low.
Exactly correct. And I based it upon that state law and when I was looking through that, I was like, this is, this is really dated and it needs to be updated. Uh, we can set the rates in anything you want. I was just looking for a foundation to start with.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Campbell, we had this discussion in-house because like I told them, I said, for fifteen hundred bucks, I'm just gonna bore through the line. I mean, that's, time is money. So if you're only gonna charge me fifteen hundred, now if it's a fifteen thousand dollar fine for a contractor, like, hey, that's, that's a material, something to get your attention. But again, what I want to be very careful of is we also own pieces of equipment that we dig the earth with too. So.
Right.
What's good for us, what's good for them is good for us too. So if we're digging and we have someone that is just, you know what, so what, I'll look for it later. Even though they'd be subject to discipline, but same time is making sure we're just equally balancing it. But we had the same conversation in the house, like, oh, for fifteen hundred bucks, I'm gonna keep blowing and going. And so I think that's what we're seeing is it's no big deal to us to bore through a service line. Six, I mean, time is money. They got a certain timeline. They gotta have it installed. So yeah, they blew through the former mayor's sewer line. To them, six thousand bucks is no big deal. The time to get it done would have cost them more. So it's like finding ways that they're spending a little bit more time because our crews are out there for four hours and we're getting nothing in return. So I, I like the idea of recovering our costs, but it needs to be something that's recovering our costs plus. But at the same time, it does need to be punitive to the resident. But to answer your question, if somebody hits a residential line, resident needs to call a plumber. Because once, if they're putting in a fence, calling the city to do it, we don't have any way to recover. So we're responding for an emergency response that they didn't call nine, or they didn't call for the locate. Now, we're responding to an emergency that's on their own property. So they really need to be calling a plumber to fix that line. And really staff does not need to be advising whether to call plumbers or electricians because sometimes what will happen is, hey, we'll help you out here. And plumbers will lose out or the electrician will lose out on making the repair that's really for them to be making at the city. So that's a fine line that we walk, uh, very smartly.
Mr. Mayor, one more.
Yeah, go for it, Mr. Campbell.
So on the fee structure, starting at five hundred dollars for the first offense and then a thousand and ten thousand, is that per permit or per?
Well, that's the fine that's in that first chapter that, in the five fifteen section or five, chapter five fifteen. That is the fine for doing this.
But is it, say, you have John Doe LLC come in here in January and he, he hits one on that permit and then six months later, he's back in town on another permit and he hits a second one. When does that?
It follows through on that, on that one job.
On that one permit, okay.
Each permit will start.
Okay.
Uh, start over. So, but if he's working on that same job for a year, he gets three strikes on that same job. He's gonna not be happy.
Okay, right. Thank you. Good questions.
It's a reason we're having a workshop and there may need to be a clarification into ordinance on that.
Does any other, other local fire departments have this or something similar with the same rates?
No, uh, I talked to a couple of them and they're billing them under the Spiller Pays Act, which is so gray as to if it applies to underground utilities, I would not feel comfortable doing that.
So this will just strengthen ours and give us a, a foundation?
Yes, correct.
So everybody else will come to us wanting to.
Yes.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
If you have any questions, bring it back to the council meeting, hand it off to Deputy Chief Hollenworth, we'll get it fixed.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, so Mr. Mayor, Grant, I would reiterate what you said. I, I, what I enjoy about the conversation is I love the questions. Because these are questions we've had as a staff. And the same thing, Councilman Updike was, are we the only people gonna do this? Why is it such a? So, yeah, I, I appreciate staff looking for ways. And Tim, I know you've worked on this and Chief, I know, Tim, you wanted to get up to the microphone so badly today. So Chief, thank you for covering that, um, and bringing it up. But I also appreciate the feedback and, and the way this works. And I appreciate the work sessions even more so because these are things, again, the one thing that I would probably reiterate about, just because we talked about it here, when we get to the council ordinance itself, because the general public may not be watching this one either, this is a great question to ask again, not that we're not prepared for it, but same time, those are great times just to show, hey, these are some things that were, that were brought up in the overall discussion. Uh, before we go into the city council discussions, just in general, what each year by the charter, I'm required just to provide priorities or different things. And so, uh, to, to the council. But at the same time is what I ask the staff for, those that have been part of the city since two thousand and sixteen, when we introduced the Trust Edge. Inside that book, David Horsager talks about, if you have more than three priorities, you don't have priorities at all. And so we've, we focused on, uh, public safety in the past. We focused on, uh, obviously the wastewater plant has been probably the biggest one because of the issue with DNR, uh, being under a compliance order. So we're working on it again. It's just what are the priorities of the organization? Uh, what are the priorities of the departments? So I kind of compiled a list for you, uh, today. I would tell you from a legislative perspective for the city, uh, as again, one thing I love about this discussion, you've not seen me present or bring before this council a lot of legislation. You've seen us bring a lot of legislation to get rid of it. Uh, but in this year, one of the legislative priorities for us inside this organization will be the rate structure legislation is to making sure that it's tied to the, the capital improvement project every year that the council, whether it be ten years from now, five years from now, the council has got to take up the rate structures every other year or whatever. So that legislation is a priority before we get to the twenty twenty-six budget process. That'll be the only legislative piece that I have that'll be coming forward. So the city attorney, Bob and I have been working on that previously is to make sure that we present you. So we'll have a work session on that legislation as to the way you want it to look. We already present the budget, but this is one of those things that requires the council to stop and reflect on it. Obviously, the funding for, uh, the wastewater plant at the legislature, I do know that there's ongoing work. Uh, MM funding is a priority for us from the standpoint of either it's a go or no-go project. So why it's a priority is not necessarily, it's a state highway, not a city street. So why that's on there is more about if the state doesn't fund it, we move out of it and move on to the next project. Ninety days operating cash has been something that Bob, one of the things that, of the fiscal policies that they've been working on as a staff. He's brought it up in the budget hearing, so that's gonna be ongoing. The ERP system, the water tower being under construction, is a big time priority for the city to make sure that that gets done from a, from a standpoint. Uh, the building annex, but the biggest issue on this list is number nine is the April twenty twenty-five DNR. We'll be submitting our letter to DNR this year that we have met the compliance deadline for, which is a, which will never be, will never be recognized as a major accomplishment, but it is literally a longstanding issue that the city has now officially, believe it or not, uh, achieved the first objective to that, which is, which is due. We'll send them a letter in April twenty twenty-five. Also, we'll send them a letter with that letter of all that the city has done from, from all the work that has gone into that, that plant from CIP three, six, seven. One of the projects that's not even listed on here is they're doing, gonna be doing an I and I study. In fact, it is listed, but it's not specifically. We're doing a pilot program this year for thirty-two houses of what the value, this, this will probably be another piece of legislation that'll come to you at some point, is the ability to go on private property to actually repair where the water is leaking into our sewer system that's causing it, like, we cannot just fix the plant, we've got to go into the system to fix it. Well, sometimes you're getting in someone's private property. Again, I'm thinking of people that do not have five or six thousand dollars just to go out and repair a line. So there is a budget to go in there and look at it. There is one area I believe is identified in town, has thirty-two houses on it during a rain event, generates a million gallons in one event. The beauty of that line is it is isolated. So we're gonna go into that one area with the five hundred thousand dollars that's budgeted and we're gonna see what the value of just repairing one line or one section of line is in town. Because during one rain event, it increases by a million gallons a day. So if you gotta go build a plant for six million, it's, that holds six million gallons and it was a hundred and fifty, a hundred million dollars, do the math of what saving a million gallons a day will do. So, uh, identifying that. Then the big question, we had a long discussion of this today, is obviously Stockton Lake. And so we're gonna be down to the go-no-go decision on Stockton Lake this year, whether we're gonna, whether the city wants to secure a thirty-year supply of water out of Stockton Lake. That's a big decision because if the city does not opt in, granted thirty years from now, those of us in here will not be here do, making that decision, but someone's gonna make that decision. So there is a long-term decision that has to be made to secure it. We were doing the math today of what it would take for the city to be a participant in that. So we'll be bringing that in a work, workshop, uh, and inviting the community to, uh, attend those as well. That's a big, a big issue. Then also you need to sell the properties in the downtown, site the next water tower site, which I believe our staff has done. And then obviously capital master planning for Fire Station Three, J.R. Martin Park, the twenty twenty-seven SIS and twenty twenty-eight one eight fire sense sales tax for apparatus. And then every page thereafter kind of is a layout of what each department is working on. It's where you say, where does the community become involved in that? When you look at the connection pillar from the Trust Edge, through the Parks Department, the clarity pillar through the, through administration, different places what police and fire are looking to do to connect more of the community, you'll find it. Two places we talked about this morning were the PIO position, but also the website. Again, the PIO position is not a priority on this list. It's, for us, it's like, where does that position? What is the, what does success look like for that position? Is it just updating a Facebook page? Or do we need to work on more of our website, uh, data management? So we had that discussion today of updating the website and actually rebuilding the website. But in rebuilding the website, it's tied into Bob's work, which he calls Project Genesis, which is tying into the, uh, the operating software of the city. So again, just because these are the things that I'm working on, you can find behind it where the staff is working specifically on specific priorities. So again, this is not for today necessarily to kick the, the discussion, but it's an ongoing discussion with this council. Every other month, what those priorities are for you. So what does that look like and how to get those in there? I think it was three years ago, we sat down with council and said, what would those priorities look like? And we got, we got, we got hung up on the communication side and the PIO side, but we couldn't define what success looked like. So before you go spend a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, what does success look like for those positions before we go and create them? So with that, uh, there's any questions on that? Because literally it will be come down, come down to something that, uh, you'll be asking to be on the agenda for what you want to discuss. So today, Councilmember Updike has provided several things that he wanted to discuss, uh, in general. The mayor had talked about discussing priorities, so there's time for that. But for that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Updike.
For the last month or so, I've been looking, uh, at cities, uh, uh, in the area that are similar in size. Looked at like St. Louis, Kansas City, Columbia, Jeff City, here in the state, and I looked at like at Lubbock, Texas, Hays, Kansas, and it's places like that. And the ones that I brought down and you guys see in front of you are the ones that are most common in every single one I've been looking at. If anybody's got any questions, I mean, we can go to the Sister Cities International one. Uh, all it is, is we're, we would go with the Sister City International, uh, group. They would give us a list of cities to pair us with. Uh, we would go through each one, say which one would be the most beneficial to pair with. Then, uh, we would send a letter to them, ask any, review and see if they would want to, uh, partner up with us, become our sister city. Uh, one thing that I noticed in the Sister City, uh, website, uh, is the, um, visitation, uh, every, once every five years, I believe, it says, we have to visit them and they have to visit us. So that's, that part is the only drawback that I see would be funding the flights every five years to this location to see our sister city, as I say. But, uh, one of the benefits is, is, uh, that I've seen is, um, cities creating a festival in the honor of their sister city. And it, you know, bringing more culture and the different views and different, uh, ways of life just to see. So I mean, it's, uh, pricing on that I have not looked into or sought at this time. It was just an idea to see if, you know, maybe in the future, just to take a look at, see what everyone had to say. So, uh, go ahead.
Just, just an idea for consideration.
Yeah.
So, so taking this, it, it, since we have several different items here on our agenda, item one at a time with that Sister City International Board. Uh, did you have anything else on that that you wanted to add?
The only thing, I mean, the, the board itself could be like three to five members. Uh, people here in the city don't have to be necessarily part of the city, but you know, you know, maybe a person from the cha, uh, from the council, a chamber, then two or three more prominent people in this, uh, within the community.
Okay. So is this something, just a question for me, is this something, uh, is this like a, something the constituents have approached you on in the past?
No, that's just stuff, ideas that I've seen that larger city has to have the community more involved with the city.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Mr. Updike? And there's no vote.
Have you talked to Springfield Sister City organization?
I have not. Springfield's got, uh, I believe, four different sister cities.
Uh, two, they have two sister cities.
Yeah, and but they've been.
It's Saki Japan and.
And then, uh, they're, they're in contracts, aren't talks with two, two more.
But it's ran by a nonprofit.
Yes.
Yeah. PeopleThroughPeace.org, I believe is there.
So that's the Springfield one, is, it's through a nonprofit, not necessarily in.
Right. It's ran by a nonprofit group and they do fundraisers and that kind of stuff to help pay it. And they're the ones that then pay for the trips over and, and like that kind of stuff. Because they have to have people that house delegates when they come visit.
Right.
Or a member of the Springfield one, that's why. I know stuff about it.
Sure. No, appreciate the input. So there definitely would be an additional funding mechanism needed to fund something like a Sister City.
Yeah, at this point, I couldn't tell you how much or anything like that. It was just an idea. I mean, I could, if I, I mean, I could keep looking into it if it's, if you guys want. If not, I mean, it dies right here, as I say.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions from city council for Mr. Updike? Okay. Seeing that there is none, uh, we'll just move on down to number four.
Uh, the creation of the Women's Advocacy Council. That one I was looking at and it's for, to me, when I was looking at it and saw it as a possible council for Republic is, it just gives, uh, women a bigger voice in the city of republic because I know a majority of the businesses are, uh, are predominantly men. But the smaller businesses in town, like a lot of the boutique stuff are ran by women. So this would be a way to get, uh, women entrepreneurs, uh, single moms and, you know, all walks of life to get together, to, you know, to see that they're equally represented in the city and have their voice heard on, uh, ordinances and votes coming up.
Okay. Do we have any questions from council on the Women's Advocacy Council?
Mr. Updike, um, how do you propose that they, they get that voice?
Uh, three to five members, uh, of women entrepreneurs in city. Or we can have, uh, mentorship programs with women inside the city limits. I mean, that's necessarily in the actual works for the city, but you know, that work live and shop in Republic. Having, having them come together to make sure that their voices heard too. Or a bigger voice heard.
Any additional questions from council? And that's one thing, it's just more of a statement, just, uh, you know, on my own behalf, something I would really struggle on that is just the fact that it would feel to me like I was excluding someone else, just even on, you know, I understand that the intention is to include more. Do we have, was there any sort of a particular problem that you were approached with by anyone in town feeling that they were misrepresented or underrepresented?
No, these are all just like, every one of these, uh, ones that are right here are ones that I've seen that other cities have, have had great success with in the community. So I mean, it's not necessarily that I've been brought attention to or mentioned to, it's just, these are the ones that I've seen that has brought the city closer and everybody, more transparency and everything.
Something to take into consideration. Something to take into consideration. I just want to enter, reiterate as, as council members, we're supposed to represent everyone equally.
Right.
So when we get into that separate class of citizen and then spending more time, I feel like it excludes certain people too. So we have to be very careful about excluding when we're trying to include as well. Did you have anything else to add on that numbers four?
No.
Any additional questions from city council? Seeing that there is none, we'll move on to item number five.
The youth advisory count board, because I remember when back at Iverson School, you know, we always asked. Counsel and our parents and everybody question about, why can't we have this? Why can't we have this? You know, we were always shot down with, you know, no, we can't have it, you know, we don't need it. So I'm sure, you know, it's that still progressing today in today's high school that they're asking, you know, why can't we get this here in town or why can't we do this? Like the skateboard park is a big issue that I've heard over the years that, you know, Republic wanting. But this would give them a voice and. A, a way to set, way to have their voice heard in a meaningful way. Because so the, there'd be kids ages six through 12, grade six through 12 or kids 13 through 18. I based it off of the actual high school student body council. They've got, have like a minimum grade attendance. And a recommendation from the school. They would have a funding mechanism like from the city for like, for an example, I say $10,000. That youth adversary group would have to come up with a complete project from start to finish. That they have to produce for the city of republic and for them to host. And for them to host it, it will have the city backing them on this project. And for, on the flip side of that, they, we would have them as people to help during our big projects like pumpkin days. Or you know, city, city sponsored project, we would have them to help also.
Okay.
And they would be able to come in and talk to you, you know, if Ms. Suzie's a seventh grader wants to be a city administrator, you know, she'd come in, you know, talk to David Cameron about. You know, where to, you know, what to look for in college and stuff. So it'd be almost like a mentorship. From us, council, city attorney, city clerk to the next generation of voters that are coming up.
Okay. Do we have any questions from council?
When you deal with youth, that's another story because then there's safe environment and stuff like that that you have to be involved with as well. So. And to echo what the mayor said earlier, as a city, we always, we're always open to these organizations anyway. The youth and, and women advocacy groups or any group where the city is always open to these. And being someone here was during the, the skate park, we had a lot of people in here at the meetings and, you know, hijacked the meetings. And talked about the skate park. And finally, the answer was, if you want a skate park, go open one. And that's simply that. So if there's something that they're wanting to do, so what really the. Getting the city involved with something like that can, can also be detrimental to the city. So.
Well, I understand. I mean, like I said, these are just ideas that I've seen that benefited and succeeded in other cities that, you know, for us to take it, just to take a look at to see. If they would be beneficial to us.
Sure. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Has there been any interaction with student government and this body in recent history or?
I know there has in the past.
And is something, is that something we could just encourage, right? Like local city council or student councils coming around with different ideas?
Yeah, they did. Years ago, they, they had something at the school where you, you brought in people for a career day basically, and then you, you sat and talked to. The students and city council had a presence there, the mayor had a presence there. So I don't know if they still, the skills, school still does that or not, but it's an opportunity then for the school to step up and.
I've, I've talked to the student council advisor over there and to her recognition, she has not seen or heard anybody from city council if they want to. Have them come in or have us go over there to talk to them. She says she cannot remember. Of anyone doing that in the past future.
But you, you didn't do that last year?
And, and so just, just to touch on what Mr. Harder had mentioned a little bit, I know earlier this year, there's always, you know, being the mayor, I know I get. Probably approached more than everyone else to, to go to the schools. And so I've been to several of the schools here in the last year. Something that was kind of similar to what you were talking about with the, the mentorship and, you know, if someone wanted to be a city administrator, if someone wanted to. Any one of the city jobs, police officers, the Republic High School had, I believe it was called Flight, Take Flight Day where a lot of the, the. High school students get to, I think it's, it depends on what grade they're in. It, you know, it progresses as they go through and the seniors get. Preference of what they want to do on looking at some of those jobs and whatnot. And the other ones are more of a, kind of a detail, just going through that process of learning about stuff. And so I know the schools have stuff that goes on. That Flight Day was one of the most impressive just because. There was probably at least 30 people from Republic, different professions from private, nonprofit. I think we had a representative there from the fire department. Council member Neil was there. We didn't get to see each other that day, but we were in that same building.
We were up there.
So.
There's pictures.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm interested to, I saw the pictures. And it was a fun day and I, in no ways ever want to discourage that. Each, each within our own, you know, what? Anytime you have a chance to reach out to the, the youth, the kids, by all means, you know, do that because that's, that's how we bring them and that's how we bring this, that's the conversation. Our city council meeting always has an opportunity during that city council meeting for anyone that wants to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. And so anyone that felt like they were misrepresented or misrepresented or underrepresented. They can always come to this city and, and come to this podium and address each and every one of us. And so that's definitely something that I encourage anyone that feels they're underrepresented or misrepresented. Please come here and talk to us. We've, we've got this opportunity before and after the meeting as well. And so I didn't mean to get off track from the student council part, but yeah, there are a lot of different things that the, the schools already provide for us. Last, just last month, I think I was over at the elementary school with the, it was a lighthouse academy. It was kids over at. I'm not good with the school names, but it was a great opportunity to go over there and see their leadership and, and these were elementary school kids. And so I know over here at Republic Schools, they're focusing early in on those, the children with the leadership skills and what it takes in ownership and building that character. And so not trying to discourage youth advisory at all, we can all do that on our own. I'm just a little bit concerned about, you know, when we come to these committees and we're taking more financial needs, we're taking more time. All of these different committees kind of had their own makeup and their own things to make them happen. But I'm interested to learn more about the student council president and, and hearing what they have to say about having more involvement and how we can do that more often. Do we have any questions from council? So I have a note here that says food is ready. I think that trumps everything else. And so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and take a break. Do we have a time for coming back? 10:15?
10:15?
12:15? So about 12:15 ish, we'll come back and then we'll finish our discussion. With that, it's time to eat. We need to turn these to red.
Yeah, please.
Turn your microphone to red or green.
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 Green means go.
All right, we'll pick up our discussion where we left off. We left off, we were at the Youth Advisory Board. Honestly, I can't remember exactly what we were left off on, so we'll just open it up. Does council have any additional questions to the Youth Advisory Board for Mr. Updike? Seeing that there is none, I'm gonna go ahead and move on. We're gonna move on to item number six, honorable key to the city board. Mr. Updike.
One thing this is, if someone goes above and beyond, you know, to help somebody else out, like, you know, he's not a firefighter, he's not a policeman, he's not a first responder. This is like if, you know, your neighbor, you know, you're having a medical emergency or something at your house, your neighbor comes over and performs a heroic duty without, you know, risking his own life. This would be like showing recognition that, you know, we know what you did and we appreciate it, and this is just like, just, this will be, just, it'd be on paper, literally, key to city, but just say, hey, you know, what you did went above and beyond what someone would actually do in that sort of situation.
Okay.
I mean, we can, we, you know, do one a year, three a year, just depends on, you know, what the event was and...
Whatever the board decided, so what they wanted to... Do we have any questions for Mr. Updike on key to the city board? So, do you have any kind of an idea of who would make up this board?
Uh, my first thought would be the actual council. They would bring in, bring files together, like, you know, what people did, and we, you know, go over a couple of them and say, hey, do we, you know, did they go above and beyond of what they, you know, someone would actually do?
Do we have, does staff know, has, have the City Republic ever given out a key to the city?
They do, they do, they've done in the past.
We have done it in the past?
Not like, not like key to the city, but they...
The plaque with the...
Yeah, exactly.
They don't get a real key?
Not a key, not a key.
Okay.
Because I know the fire department and the police department do officers of the year.
Life-saving awards.
Also life-saving, yeah. But this would be like, you know, someone, your neighbor, you know, saving your life. This would be more or less for going above and beyond.
So, so, so as a function of city council or as a function of a separate board?
Either way.
Either way, but, okay. Any additional questions for council member Updike? Anything you'd like to add to that discussion, Mr. Updike?
No.
Okay. Um, moving on, we'll go ahead and move on, and then at the end, I'll have a few things that I would like to say too, just as mayor, looking at this as a whole, but moving on to that number seven, appointment of a council liaison to the Chamber of Commerce Board.
I have actually already talked, or gave my ideas to Macy Mitchell and Mr. Cameron, and they were both saying, yeah, this would be, I don't wanna say a headache off of Cameron, but, but it'd be something that would take something away from his plate, that his plate's already full of, to kinda deviate and someone else can do. So, I mean, because I don't think David needs to be there to present every update the city has going, but if something important or vital comes up, yeah, he can show up, but if it's like general updates from the city, I'm sure one of us would be more happily to do, and then instead of Chief Sells, or David, or Lisa, or Karen, or somebody, just, you know, one of us show up, say, hey, this is the updates the city has, and there you go.
Okay, so, so, I'm just a little bit confused. Is this the council liaison, or is it a board member of the Chamber of Commerce?
It'd be like a, the planning zoning, one of us sits on the board, just kinda oversee or overhear.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
So, I believe that the chamber, to add clarity to this, the chamber actually has an executive board that oversees the director. So, I believe the city has a seat by their bylaws, the city has a seat on side of their seat. One thing that would have to be considered by the chamber would be, is, does their bylaws reference a city employer, or is it references city councilman? If it's just a city representative, so, it may be one of those things that they'd have to potentially change their own bylaws to allow it, but to Councilmember Updike's point, I, I've not served on this board for five years, so it's not, it's no inconvenience to me, but we do appoint, so like, Chief Sells has been on it, other employees have been on it for being the executive board. When it comes to the chamber luncheon meetings, I provide two presentations a year. We're scaling back on the number of city updates at those events, just simply because we do such larger events with the chamber, but we'll do a little five to seven minute presentation. That's not what this is talking, we still handle the chamber luncheons as the representatives of the city with the business community, but on the executive board, what they're talking about is their budget, they're talking about the projects they're doing, and I think a lot of times, what I've found historically is, they wanna know what projects are going on in the city, a lot of times, we don't provide those, a lot of that information anyway, because we're either under NDA, we can't share it with the chamber until it's ready to be released, and so sometimes, it's just more about this is what's going on before it hits the, the news, and so, we're definitely very favorable to like, we're not sure what value we play serving on the chamber board representing the business community, since we work for the business community already, but if there is a city council member that would like to be on it and serve on another committee, it's not paid, so it's not something that's added to, it would not be considered a meeting on this agenda, but yeah, no disrespect to that board, but it's like, having us being in charge of that person's position would be more suited probably for a city council member, actually.
So, as a time, we're not 100% certain that the Chamber of Board, their charter, whatever they have that would allow for this?
Yeah, that'd be some...
More research, I think, would be...
Well, yeah, what I would, what we would do is if it's, if this is something that, because of all of those listed, by far, this is one, like, I, I was telling Councilmember Updike, I was like, I'm very much, if somebody wants to serve on the chamber board, as to what's going on in the business community, this is council, because we already work with the business community, and I think it'd be a conflict for us as a staff member to be working with business community, where you can recuse yourself as a vote, we, we provide recommendation, but serve on the board that actually would be advising for it. So, there is some logistical pieces there that make sense from a legal perspective, that a council member could in fact recuse themselves versus a staff member providing recommendation. There is some more clear delineation in that, so I, but I think what has to happen is the chamber bylaws need to reflect that it would be a city council member, not a, or, or a city representative, being broad does not bother us as much, probably would be the city attorney, but, so, very favorable to having a staff member off of the board, making hiring and firing decisions, or promotional decisions for someone that stands the profit off of executive, so, there is some clean, cleaning up that could be done there that we agree with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any additional questions? Any additional input?
Like I said, I've already talked to Macy Mitchell, and he'd be in favor of this also.
A, a chamber liaison, and of course, I think you're always welcome to the Chamber of Commerce meetings too.
I know, I know.
Just an idea, that, any additional questions? Maybe we already asked that. So, and, and I'm just kinda moving forward, you know, I appreciate bringing those ideas to us, of course, that was the last thing that we had, as far as council member Updike's presentations and discussion. Looking at it from the mayor's perspective, of course, you know, this is a lot of different, a lot of different boards, encourage the council to, to take everything we talked about today into consideration, if there's something in particular, you know, of course, we do Something else to be aware of as we're going forward with this, you know, we've got those, those boards that are mandated, Planning and Zoning, Housing Authority, and, and everything else, and all those come with a certain amount of work, uh, paperwork, work retention, sunshine law, and everything else that's involved with those, unless it's an ad hoc committee from the mayor. And so, just please keep in mind the difference between the two, uh, please keep in mind who does the appointment to those boards with consent and consideration, of course. The only other thing, but, no, I thought I missed something.
I still got, you're gonna turn it over to me.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'm not, yeah, you'll be the end of, uh, not the end, but, uh, so, yeah, I appreciate having this discussion today. I know that was a lot of different topics, um, I know each one of these, we probably have our own individual feelings, uh, as you're going through this and you think about it, anything that you want, I think it's three council members can request that this be on our agenda. Um, just opening this discussion right now, is there any of these on that list that we want to pursue as a city council? And also keeping in mind of all the priorities that the city just put in front of us, and of course, and I'm not trying to, you know, put you out, but a wise man did tell me if you have more than three priorities, you don't have priorities. So, I'm trying to get everything within there. Mayb- maybe, yeah.
This is wise.
Wise man. So, just keeping that in mind, keeping in mind that we did just, you know, go over the city priorities, or at least we have a list of the city priorities, so I don't need a definite answer for that right now. I just wanted to open it up, if anyone was just jumping at the heels and there was three of you, then, you know, we've got that. But there's a lot of information to go over, appreciate your presentation to that, a lot of things to think about, always advocating for to get involved with the youth, whether it's over here at the school, the elementary school, I know there's always invitations and ways for us to get involved with that, so, uh, a lot of great ideas, a lot of things that we can pursue on our own. I just wanna make sure that if we bring this back as a collective body in the city council, that this fits within our priorities. So, with that, that's all I'm going to add to that. Do I have any council members that wanna say anything in addition to the five items from Councilmember Updike's presentation? Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you for the discussion. So, there's a couple of things that are coming up for future discussion. Councilmember Neal's talked about code enforcement, that's been a topic that, uh, we've, we've brought up. We've also, one of the things that was brought up in the list that we'll talk about, that we'll give a presentation on for discussion, is the street priority. So, obviously, street funding was, was cut several, because a lot of the funding went into the police department after the 2019 ballot measure, the funding went back into the street department, motor fuel sales tax, so we've been able to do more street projects in the last two years, but what are the priorities for doing that? So, we're gonna be putting together a presentation as to where those are, they're always subject to change, but kinda just a communication piece was what are the next stretches of streets? So, thank you for the feedback that like, hey, well, I'd like to learn more about that, that we can prepare the presentation for. But one thing about it is I wanna, we, we did this in the training with the city attorney, and what I, for, for the community's benefit, for just everyone's benefit, how, how any one of these would move forward, like Councilmember Updike understands. So, s- staff cannot move forward on any of these by one member's request, just to call up and say, city attorney, I want you to draft me up a resolution to do a women's advisory council. Our charter does not allow that. So, this is the forum by which it has to take place. So, basically, in, in those discussions, what we'll ask for at the council meeting is if these things have to be taken up, there has to be direction provided from this council collectively by a consent vote that, hey, we wanna proceed with the sister city, or we wanna proceed with it. So, this is the forum that is created for us to have those conversations. So, if there's something you wanna bring up or talk, take up, again, the legislation we was talking about for the utility rates, uh, long-term, for what is the protocol that this, this council's gonna create legislatively to make sure future boards are constantly looking at them on a routine basis, based upon the master plan or compliance orders is, is gonna be brought before, that's something I can bring onto the agenda, but it's something we'll discuss in this, this forum. I would just encourage, if there's something you wanna look at, let me know what it is, we'll add it to the agenda. I would just ask that, again, in those places, I appreciate the, because we, we talked about the, the chamber discussion, when I looked at the list, I was like, we'd love to change the chamber piece of it, where, like I, like I told, uh, the council member in these discussions, I'd love to go through these and, but we're in the middle of it, we're in legislative session, working on these things, so it may be a priority for the council to work on long-term, um, we just wanna know what those areas are. So, and I think that there's a discussion, that there's not, these are not the only priorities we have in the city, what, what do we need to be talking about? Is a skate park necessary? And, you know, just what are those topics that, that you hear, and what can we talk about? So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you to staff for all of your time today, and then for everyone that came out here to, to give us the city priorities and, and make everything here today a priority, especially with the utility damage. I know that's something that a lot of us have had to deal with, uh, and I, I see it in my neighborhood, I see it in my, my neighboring neighborhood, all my neighbors and throughout town, so definitely something for us to be aware of. Is there anything else council-wise would like to add before we close out the meeting? Seeing that there is none, um, and I have nothing in additional to add to this, so just make sure that, uh, be safe this evening if we have any weather. How's that? This meeting's adjourned.